All right, good evening, everybody. It is seven o'clock. So we will call this meeting to order. And if you would join me in starting this meeting with a moment of silence. Now I have the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, I want to invite Frank Boppel to come up and share about our interpretation services.
Good evening, we are pleased to provide Spanish interpretation services for those in attendance this evening. This includes interpretation during the meeting and for those who want to provide public comment. If you're interested in these services, please visit the table outside the commission chambers. Muy buenas noches, estamos complacidos en darle el servicio de interpretación en español para los participantes que lo necesiten. Esto incluye la interpretación durante la reunión al igual que asistir a aquellos que quieren dar algún comentario público. Si están interesados en nuestros servicios, visite la mesa localizada afuera de la cámara de comisión.
Thank you so much, Frank. Next, we'll have roll call.
Commissioner Sassi?
Present.
Commissioner Lanier? Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
President.
Commissioner Repart?
Here. And can I get someone to make a motion to excuse Mayor Bliss?
To move.
To support.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. So tonight, we have several things that you can comment on. The first thing tonight is to comment on anything that we're voting on, on the agenda. So I just want to acknowledge that there are a lot of people here. There's varying viewpoints, especially on some of the things that we're going to discuss tonight. And so we ask that you come, you have three minutes to speak. You have, but we ask that you be respectful in your comments. We ask that you don't clap or hold up signs or things like that out of respect for the other people in the chambers. And then, once you have three minutes, then we'll move on to the next person. If you are here to speak tonight about our two public hearings this evening, which are, you know, grants that we're submitting for parks. One for Camelot Park, the other one for Ottawa Hills Park. Those public hearings will happen later in the agenda. And then, at the end of the night, you'll have the opportunity to comment on anything that you wish. So at this point, we will open up public comment on anything that we're voting on tonight. And if you could be specific on what item you're referring to, that would be great. Thanks.
Very pleasant good evening, fellow veterans and citizens of Grand Rapids. This is the House of the People, Watchdog Miller reporting, here to desegregate downtown civilized public services and expose lunacy in high places. Going back to 1838, can anyone find a more corrupt mayor than the present incumbent? Now, I think there's three visits he's made to making out to Washington. Who's funding it? Anyway, that's the sort of thing we're looking into, and we'll go into that later under the correct agenda items. Seven, five, Mary Ryan, this is Mary Ryan, I think you ought to consult her first. You call her there. She went to an altar, got a very significant T-H-E-I-R. What's that all about? You should receive permission from Mr. and Mrs. Ryan before you start calling her there. It's not a town word, what's that all about? Mayor would say more around town here with real people. This stuff is popping up in our agenda. Seven, eight. The, I think that's sevens, six, seven, and eight. In terms of wards, we'd be better off, instead of tinkering around with ward boundaries and controversial election dates, we'd be better off getting ourselves, figuring out and getting an expired Wyoming. It's reported last time, over the minutes, when I was in the VA, on the vet bash of sixteen. And every single sidewalk, side streets, sidewalks, perpendicular streets, all four sidewalks get plowed by the city. So one thing Wyoming did some twelve years ago was the factory closings and the Great Recession. They just closed down City Hall on Fridays. That cuts off twenty percent of the budget right there. On twelve, like to see Route Five brought back, the five wealthy, two Getting Street, which was removed viciously a number of years ago by some self-important people. If I want to go to a GRPS meeting, and many of your citizens want to go, even some employees, then the five ought to be brought back west on Franklin. Mayor Bliss, under eight, one, and two, Mayor Bliss should not be allowed to run her personal credit cards, which she's using, using our city treasury as a piggy bank. There comes eight, one, two, three, and four, you know, get her out of our city piggy bank and like her to stay home instead of travel, it's another thing that pops up. Our local bus outs, none of your black bus outs, one, two, three, five.
Thanks, Mr. Miller, your time's up.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else who wishes to be heard tonight on something we're voting on?
Good evening, Commission. Thank you for your service to our city. My name is Pastor Jerry Bishop, and I'm the senior pastor of the LifeQuest Urban Outreach Center. And I'm coming on tonight asking for the full commission to remain firm on the vote that was taken this morning on the moratorium for any advancement of the dialogue of the medical or the recreational marijuana going forward for at least the next six months. At the same time, I'm here in opposition to the Planning Commission's recommendation that they would remove or ask the city to remove boundary data or the one thousand feet distance from places of worship, place, schools, daycares, public parks. It's amazing that in 2020, we're arguing about things that have been detrimental to our community for a hundred years, and now because we're monetizing it and we want to open up things in our ward, although it's one of the most illustrious wards, I'm thankful that I am not only a pastor in the third ward, it's the best ward, no offense, commissioners. It's the best ward in the city, but I'm also a homeowner. And we have, if the statistics are correct, we have thirty-seven percent unemployment in the third ward. The least ward to be able to afford the impact, the negative impact of recreational marijuana retail shops is our ward. But then, to insult the local church body to even consider that you would remove a boundary designation is not just asinine in thinking, it's offensive to the faith community itself. And we're a growing group, and we're going to continue to grow because for us, it's not about a free enterprise thing. It's a bad decision. So as we grow in this dialogue, I'm hoping and praying that on tonight, that you exercise some good judgment to remain firm in our mayor's absence, if you have to revote, that you remain, the moratorium for the next six months remains the same. While you do better planning, the community at large does greater research. And then, to ignore the Planning Commission's recommendation to dissolve the boundaries, the current policy that's in place that protects houses of worship, schools, parks, and daycare within a thousand feet buffer zone. Thank you.
Thanks, Reverend Bishop.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the commission, city manager. It's a pleasure again to stand before you. I come to reiterate everything that Reverend Bishop had just stated, but in another way. I serve as the senior pastor of Messiah Baptist Church of Grand Rapids at five thirty, Friday thirteen, Henry Avenue. And hundreds of our constituents are members of this community, and I stand representing them after speaking with the congregation about their wishes as well. I made a statement last time that I presented here that the evidence concerning long-term, the long-term community effect and the presence of legalized recreational and medical marijuana at best is inconclusive. And that to engage, but would be treating the neighborhoods and our neighbors as Petri dishes and basically subjects of research. And I stand on that statement from an ethics standpoint. But being that our conjoining stance wasn't enough to fully persuade the unanimous body of the commission, I wondered if there were another motive lurking in the background. And although from an ethical standpoint, I can say what I just said, but from a street standpoint, I come to find that if you follow the money, you'll find the motive. Amen. And so, truth be told, the neighborhoods that we're asking for this policy to stay in place about with the religious organizations, the child, the playgrounds and the parks, it's not the neighborhoods that are asking for the removing of the waiver, it's the businesses. Businesses who have no real sweat equity, if you will, in the community. The waiver isn't for more doctor's offices. It isn't for more behavioral intervention. It's for the purpose of having more weed spots than we have doctor's offices. And so, the reason why we're making this stand is because we're standing the people, standing against entities who are coming to get money from the community without investing in it. And that being said, we're asking again that this policy stays in place. And not only that, if it doesn't stay in place, we serve our constituents at our congregation that represents hundreds, even thousands of people who put us all in place. And so, we will go back and report to our constituents, the wishes of the commission, and I guess we'll have to see each other now or later. God bless you.
Thanks.
Hello, my name is Leslie Wyman. I am a PhD candidate at Van Andel Institute. I am a scientist, a neuroscientist, study Parkinson's disease. And this is my first meeting, so thank you for having me here, thank you for everything you do. But I am here actually for the same things these gentlemen were talking about, but actually in opposition to the the hold that you guys have placed on recreational marijuana. So I am here, I think it's no secret that the city knows that I'm working very hard to start a cannabis testing facility here in Grand Rapids to ensure that cannabis in our community is of the quality and safety that we want in our community. And I think that this moratorium is making it very difficult for businesses to understand and navigate the industry. We've put in a lot of time, effort, and money to establish these businesses in the way that you guys are laying out for us. And we're doing everything we can to make sure we're doing it in the right way, but we're hitting a lot of barriers, and this moratorium is just one of them. How can we plan accordingly with our financial dollars, with our business plans, with our licensing applications, when we are not aware of how you all are feeling and how you are navigating this? So when they speak of the research isn't there to support this industry, I would say it's because we have not been given the opportunity to give you the research, right? So we really, truly want this to work for everyone. We want everyone to prosper from the legalization of cannabis. But we want to go about it in the right way, and it's becoming increasingly more difficult, especially in Grand Rapids, given your peaks and troughs of regulations. So I just ask that medical, yes, I understand, or I'm sorry, recreational rules aren't set in place, but for medical, there's no reason to be putting these on hold when there are already plans established. So please, just consider that.
Thanks, thanks for your comments.
Good evening, Commission, my name is Rosemary Brown. And I live in that area that people come up here and dog out all the time. And a lady got up several months ago, following a guy, and said, I'm with him, and I'm with them. I'm still in awe that this was even considered for our area. We are the high crime rate. I live there. And I don't see many other people that are putting it there. Here. There's a, what, a cannabis place here, and another one there, and another one there, and another one there. They have been approved. But I really do not want anything like that in my area. What do you think the crime rate is going to be? Can it get any higher? Third ward, come on! I can't, I still can't even believe that it even got on there for third ward. We're the worst of the worst, I mean, we're not, but people still says the worst of the worst. How can you even think of putting a cannabis place in the third ward? I don't want it there. I'm trying to get my area cleaned up now. It's hard work, and this is not going to be any easier with this in there. Please, don't do that. And it's coming from an old lady, please don't do that. If you want recreational cannabis or whatever, they've been getting it recreational for years. So why now do we have to have a place here, 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 here? They've been getting it for years, that's why we're in jail now. And everybody has a record, because they've been getting it. So what do we need it here? I mean, the ministers pastors are up here saying, please, don't. Just don't. I can't believe. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Brown.
I thank you guys for your time. We are West Michigan Secure Transport. We are one of the fourteen on hold. We actually submitted the application as this vote was going on and talking about the moratorium. So we really would like to seek exemption for director review applications. I feel that secure transporter and safety compliance facilities are critical for industry's success. We're small, local, I mean, this is it, this is us. We're the only secure transport application that I know of in Grand Rapids. And it's extremely hard to get up and running. We've poured so much into this and putting it back even six months. I mean, it's going to bankrupt us, we're not going to be able to get up and running. We've got investments in property and this, that, and the other thing, all the hoops that we got to jump through to try to get this approval. And I don't know if you guys want to speak to anything on that?
Our business is at, located at nineteen fifty-nine Sterling and the City of Grand Rapids. So it's kind of hard for us because I know we're talking about all the dispensaries and all that, but we're not part of the dispensary, we're part of the delivery part of it. So that's totally opposite of what everybody is talking about. We just want a secure license to transport.
Out of Grand Rapids.
Yes. You know, you guys want local people, I was born in St. Mary's Hospital right here. I'm a very religious person myself, gentlemen, and I understand your concerns. And I totally support limits on locations of where those things can be sold at. But we're talking about medical marijuana here, and it's not the big flashy money thing that all these other places are. We're working on a tight budget, I've worked hard my whole life. I've got my house on the line, I've got everything out there that I own. Everything I've worked for my entire life is on the line here, and you want to throw that in the trash? And that's really tough on me. You know, we are not talking about selling marijuana to anybody. We're going to supply medical marijuana. We're going to be getting from growers from other locations, and all that money will be funneling through Grand Rapids as a transport company. And a lot of our deliveries will be made to places like all the way up to Luddington or run to Lansing, or run to Muskegon, or down to Kalamazoo. And all that's going to be funneling through us with the tax income and everything else. So.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity.
Yes, thank you very much for giving us the time.
Yeah, thanks for your comments.
And let you know how important this is to me personally.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Good evening, Commission, my name is Darryl Delaney. I'm the pastor at Madison Square Church at the square campus. I'm here speaking in support of the delay of six months by acceptance of the medical marijuana decision, the applications that you have, and the moratorium on medical marijuana ordinance. I'm in support of that, but I have a few concerns. First and foremost, I'd like to state that I, that Grand Rapids religious organizations are business, pro-business and pro-community development. We want to see thriving economies in our city. As leaders, we respect the law, so we're not here to argue morality, the law is the law, and we respect that. But we understand that removing religious institutions from the list of sensitive uses would not prevent faith communities from expressing their concerns or support at the Planning Commission's special land use hearings. But we're concerned that there are unintentional, unintended consequences from removing religious institutions from sensitive land use. Number one, there will be no requirement for dispensaries to engage the local religious institutions they're seeking to open near. Number two, per state regulations, the city will not be able to inform neighbors or religious institutions that a dispensary is applying to remove unless it's within three hundred feet of the location proposed. And we believe this will prevent the community from engaging in a meaningful way. Number three, we're concerned that removing a religious waiver would set a new precedent for how future decisions could be made at the city level regarding the sensitive uses of religious institutions. And four, if the original intent was to regulate marijuana like alcohol, this change will ensure that it is not going to happen. Further, if you take into consideration the presentations you received from Eric Foster of Banks and Company, it does not appear that removing the religious institutions will actually open up a considerable number of parcels for dispensaries to be located. That's why tonight, I'm here to ask as a faith leader in Grand Rapids that the city commission would designate religious institutions as a sensitive land use and implement a one hundred thousand foot separation with requirement with no option for waivers to be issued. In doing so, you would aid the planning commission with the tools set clear for the guidelines regarding sensitive use. And finally, I'd like to say that there was some wisdom that we trusted that made this an a thousand foot waiver in the first place. I pray that we honor that wisdom and not change it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, all, my name is Tim Harris. I'm the pastor of the Pilgrim Rest Mission Baptist Church, right there at five ten Franklin Street. And I'm here in support with fellow brothers and sisters here. And I don't want to be redundant, but I'm here in support of the moratorium on marijuana. I believe in what is already established and would like for that to be instituted or remain instituted. And then, just to take for instance, take for, in our minds, to understand that we are as a community, we should have some understanding with one another, dialogue is important. Moving forward, it shouldn't be someone just coming in to do what they want, but our community means a lot to us, my membership. They live right in the community, and they are very concerned. And so, we want to stand together and just have some more, not just education, but dialogue so that we can work this thing together. We're not trying to push back on any business or anything like that, but what we're saying is we want to stand on what we want for our community, we want to be a part of that conversation. So I'm just asking that you stand where you already basically are and that we move forward from that position. And then, we open up our arms and open up our ears and open up our hearts to dialogue moving forward in this community. And so, we are just thankful, and I won't be redundant, I'm going to give some of my time back, and I thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Kristy Carlin Kenech, and I serve on the outreach team at Madison Square Church, and I'm also the first lady at the Ford Campus. And tonight, I would like to express support for the moratorium on medical and recreational marijuana in Grand Rapids. One of the concerns I have had as a community leader is how little guidance and support that neighborhood associations and religious institutions have actually been offered when it comes to dispensaries. There hasn't been a training given unless we ask the city to come and help us to understand how to navigate this. And I don't blame the city. The planning department has a ton on its plate to try to figure out and how to navigate this situation because this is an amazing new business opportunity for many people to take advantage of. I've been on the outreach team, and when we go to community listening meetings or sit down with dispensaries, it often feels like the big guys versus the little guys. Folks who are often coming in from out of state or from another side of the state, who actually aren't familiar, in particular with the challenges that we have faced in the third ward. And some of those challenges are, we can't, we've been working hard to get pharmacies and banks and laundromats to be located in walking distance within our church, and we haven't been able to attract that yet. And that's what we'd like to see first, before we see a dispensary right by our church. And one of my hopes for the city commission is to see our leaders make intentional efforts to support communities who have dispensaries that want to open up in their community. I hope that the city will decide on an appropriate number of dispensaries for the city to have. I'd like to see equity programs that support local ownership and benefit communities that have been disproportionately affected by prohibition. And I'd like to see that the city has time to continue to research and see how other communities have been able to strike a balance between supporting both sensitive land use needs and businesses. San Diego, California seems to be a model city that has a dozen dispensaries and deems marijuana production facilities have limits to forty maximum in their city. And that's for all of their medical and recreational facilities. And then, they have some distance locations of a thousand feet from resource, populated based city parks, churches, child cares, playgrounds, et cetera. I'm hopeful that our leaders will be able to find ways to use city dollars to provide staffing for neighborhood organizations or other entities that have to use valuable staff time to engage dispensaries. I know Garfield Park has especially been challenged with this. I also want to see the staffs dedicate time to equipping and supporting community neighborhood organizations with non-biased information to understand the law and equip the neighbors to engage the planning commission intelligently. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks.
Hi, thank you for my time, my name is Cliff. I am the founder of the local magazine, Recoil. I'm speaking on behalf against the six-month halt on medical marijuana. Regarding adult use regulations, if you need more time, I'm not against you guys taking it. But for medical, I do feel differently. I'm a founding board member of the West Michigan Cannabis Guild, and I work with a lot of the businesses. Some of the people have spoken here today. I know a lot of people have money and play in this industry, and I'm really shocked that this is actually occurring. I'm, the consequences of it seem beyond what I'd be willing to do. Just in answer to some of the questions people have been asking, why do we need these weed shops? The reasons patients, the reasons that these medical patients need access is so that they don't have to go to buy our medicine from criminals who may have a murder rap on them. We need places to go where we can get safe access to our medicine. This delay, this delay hurts. During the next six months, people are still going to consider to, people are still going to be suffering from opioid addiction. Soldiers with post-traumatic stress disorder are still, they're not going to be allowed access to the one medicine that's proven to help them. And I don't know how you guys, how anyone could wish that on a, say, a veteran. I'm an alcoholic and an addict, and I rely on cannabis to maintain my sobriety from alcohol. And I moved to Grand Rapids because it was a progressive city, and I believe it is. And I know you guys are going to do your best to get this through, I just wanted to make my voice heard, thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Program works good. My name's Jimmy. In the eighties, I sustained an injury, a neurological injury. Always prescribed any kind of drug, including the cannabis. My, yeah, my convictions and my conversion is to stand strong. I think it's being crucified daily. And so, I abstained from alcohol and drugs. And for the neuroscientist, I would challenge you to go figure that out. I think that. I think that we have three wards, and to appease the community and the businesses at large, maybe we should have three of these cannabis places. But for sure, we need to put them where John O'Connor goes to church and where he lives and his kids go to school, along with you. You're not mayor bliss.
It's true.
Our synagogues and our temples are places of worship. Are being torn down, like where I was baptized. Rumsey Street, the Worker Church. A nap church was converted into, I think they're all white people with a lot of money that live up in there. But then I believe another church was broken into, and I think that that's very sad that the money was supposed to be for a baptismal chamber. So you guys need to get it together because I've got other things to do.
Hello, Commissioners. So I find myself a, a really interesting middle ground between two points that a lot of individuals from the community, especially in the southeast side, and those wanting to come into our community, at least though it feels, it's kind of like at a standstill between. I really appreciate you, Sunita, for saying that we need to pause and that we need to make some more equitable decisions. When I look across the country, I see places like Chicago saying that if people don't have a majority-minority ownership, they're not going to let them into their city. I see places like Detroit saying that they're going to save half of the licenses in their city for minority ownership. And I feel like a city Grand Rapids size has an opportunity to do something truly radical, do things like neighborhood assistance funds off of the capital that we make, and do something that will impact so many people that over history have been impacted negatively by the war on drugs. I feel like as we watch a lot of people comment and respond on, on M Live Media posts and Facebook posts, that we really need to take a look at ourselves when one of our black commissioners says, hey, we need to be more equitable. And then everybody gets so much more angry about their vote and these businesses coming in to make them money than they actually do about the industry being as equitable as it should be, right? As, I'm somebody who's on the Garfield Park Neighborhood Association. I've talked to a lot of different businesses that are willing to greatly support and invest in our neighborhoods. I feel like if we're given the power from the city or the, the ability from the city to create a framework to hold these businesses accountable so they're not coming in making empty promises, that we could do some radical things that would impact our neighborhoods for way longer than any of us are going to be there. So I hope that you give us the ability to do so because I'm somebody who is, who is very pro-cannabis, but I'm also somebody who cares way more about black than I do about green. And I hope that a lot of these other businesses look at black people in these black communities that they're trying to start these businesses in and put their money where their mouth is when it comes to supporting our neighborhoods. Yeah.
Russell Homestead, West Side, Grand Rapids. He just said everything I wanted to say. So, amen. No, I, I absolutely agree with the reasoning to take a pause on this to create more equitable outcomes. The investment that's happened so far that we've seen come into the city so far has not been equitable around this issue. And I do think that that obviously is extremely important in the third ward, especially because it has been subjected to inequitable investment or disinvestment for generations. And I, I understand, you know, as, I'm not a terribly religious person, but I do understand the, the necessity and, and at the end of the day, the, the community is speaking that it should not be within these boundaries of, of religious institutions or of schools. Then that needs to be respected because that's the community's voice, and that's the community's vision and decision. But please take this opportunity, if this does stay in effect, to, to really research the way that this is being used in other communities and cities around the United States and in being able to do restitution towards communities that have been adversely affected by these, by the war on drugs. By the black and brown communities were, were targeted by this, and they should be the beneficiaries of this finally being legalized and, and creating economic opportunity and There was one other thing, but I cannot remember, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Perry. I wanted to update everybody on the status of my situation.
This is, this is a public, this is the first public comment on stuff that we're voting on tonight. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Perry.
Good evening, City Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jesse Turner, and I won't be before you long. We've only got three minutes, but I won't take that. I'll just simply say this, and there's a lot of things that has been said, but if all you see is what you see, then you haven't seen all that there is to be seen. I'm mid-40s, and there's longstanding collateral damage. Don't care how people try to paint the picture. There's longstanding collateral damage with recreational, medicinal, not to dismiss the pain that people are going through, but there's other ways to go about it. And here we are again. I mean, at the end of the day, it's about money. And there's increasingly it becoming a time where money's going to lose its value. And I would just urge those who have the power to make the decision to resist the temptation to look around the world, around the different states, around the different counties in Michigan, and say to yourselves, man, they're doing it. You know, let's, let's join in this rush. That's never been a good reason to do anything, just because everybody else is doing it. So I'll just simply say that if all you see is what you see, then you haven't seen all that there is to be seen. Please.
Hello. Thank you for your service, Tourist City. My name is Mike Fosbender. I'm not in favor of marijuana. I'm a, I'm a military veteran. I served in Desert Storm. And anything I've read about marijuana doesn't show there's medicinal value. I just can't find anything. I know some people say they need it, but I have a hard time finding any conclusive substantiation of that. I also own and operate Action Molder Machining, and we're in the Kenosha Industrial Park in the city of Grand Rapids. And interestingly, a few years ago, your predecessors felt it was a poor idea to approve a distillery because there was a gentleman in our park wanting to have his distillery. And we felt with over 500 employees in the park, skilled trades, CDLA truck drivers, a church, a park, a school, why would we want a distillery? It just didn't make sense, and they, they did not approve it. Fast forward to the marijuana, and I think the marijuana people just have more money. They have more resources than this guy that wanted to have the distillery. So we're back, even though we've talked about this before, and it's, it's just kind of unnerving to me. The facility in the park I'm in at 1,000 Kenosha where they want to have a medical marijuana situation, there's less than 10 parking spots. I walked over there and counted them. I don't know how they can accommodate people if you can't even park them. You know, why not go out on 20A Street where there's a parking lot? So I would like to say we spend tiny Action Molder Machining, we spend millions every year on payroll. We own four facilities in that park. We're good stewards, and we just don't need the dope guys in the neighborhood. We just don't. So I, I just think it's a bad location, and I hope that we can give that consideration. Please, thank you.
Thanks for your comments.
Good evening. I'm Bishop Dennis McMurray, Senior Pastor of the Renaissance Church of God in Christ. And I'd like to read something. It says, "An ounce of wisdom is worth more than a pound of knowledge." This morning, you walked in tremendous wisdom as you made the decision to pull back and to say, let's give this issue sound evaluation. Sound evaluation of a process that could perpetually affect the landscape of one of the greatest cities in America. You have a very difficult choice, and to say that six months is enough time to evaluate all of the difficult aspects of this issue is a very short time, very short time for something that will have a lasting legacy, whether good or bad, on the city of Grand Rapids. Grand Rapids has worked hard to become one of the premier cities in America. And the choice you made this morning, I applaud you. And I ask you to continue to have your dialogue, really search your hearts, and do the things this morning that you are prepared to do for the next six months. You have a very, 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 very long six-month road ahead of you. Collaboration is needed. Social accountability must be discussed. Economic efficiency, civil responsibility, neighborhood safety, family values, educational objectivity, and moral accountability are just some of the things that will come up over the next six months. But the fact that you, this morning, said, let's take six months, six months and make sure that Grand Rapids does the right thing, I again applaud you. And I ask each one of you to hold true to the conviction that hit your hearts this morning at 9:30. Hold true to this city that you're proud to represent tonight. Hold true to the godly convictions that I know many of you have in your heart. Hold true to the future of our young people. Hold true to the people, to the future of our elderly people. Hold true to the people that don't know about Grand Rapids, who will come to know about Grand Rapids. Hold true to the fact that my three-year-old grandson, my 18-year, 18-month-old grandson, will have an opportunity to impact this city like you all are impacting it tonight. So hold true to the six-month decision that you made this morning and walk in that ounce of wisdom.
Thank you.
Because it's greater than a pound of knowledge.
Good evening, City Commission. My name is Reverend William Barres, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Youth Department at the Renaissance Church of God in Christ. Several months ago, we attended a Grand Rapids City Commission meeting to oppose granting a waiver at the subject matter for a marijuana facility. We are still passionate about our disapproval for the marijuana facility being so close to our church campus. As a youth leader, I advocate for the protection, the safety, and the positive influence for the children in the community that I serve in. A marijuana facility in this area would undermine the positive impact that the Renaissance Church has already had on the youth and as well as the adults in our community. Therefore, I am pleading that the Planning Commission would follow the ruling of the City Commission by adhering to the city ordinance and denying the request to establish a marijuana facility at the location. Thank you again for the opportunity to express my desire on such an important matter.
Good evening. My name is Stacia Huxema, and I am a resident of the third ward. I also attend Madison Square Church, and I'm part of the outreach team there, and I am a social work professor at Calvin University. So I come at this from a couple of different perspectives, and I, I guess mostly I just want to thank you all for your work and your willingness to, to listen to us tonight. I am asking that you do delay the resolution for six months. I think there's a lot of, of wisdom in pulling back. I understand that that has some pretty negative complications for, for folks who have spoken here, and I'm sympathetic to that. But as a community member who's been involved in this over the last several months, because there've been a couple of dispensaries that have proposed to, to come into the Madison community, I personally just want to say that it's been, it's been challenging to try to quickly learn and organize and understand and have all these community engagement meetings. And it's felt a lot of times like those of us from the community are really up against, you know, companies coming from the outside who have the ability to, to pay someone who's their consultant, who can do all of this work, and the rest of, the rest of us are kind of coming out of, having other full-time jobs. We have a lot of people in our community who are community partners who have invested decades into planning and into sitting on CID boards and those kinds of things. And so I, I do think that a pause would be helpful for us to have deeper and more full conversations about the impact for our community. I agree with much of what many of the, the pastors particularly spoke about, about equitable decisions, concerned about retail leakage. I'm concerned about how is our community going to benefit from some of these business opportunities, communities that have been divested in for, for years. But there's one other thing that I want to speak to, and that is as a mental health practitioner. I do have clients who benefit from, from medical marijuana, so I'm not standing here in opposition to that. But there also is, we know as mental health providers, need for more research. And we're, we're hopeful that even this pause can provide us some time to do some of that deeper research on understanding, how is this going to impact not just individuals but communities, our communities? And, and so I, as a church member, as a neighbor, I do, I do think that that, that research is important, and a pause will, will move us in that direction. And so I'm hopeful that the Commission will not use my neighborhood as the research lab and that we can do some good work around that. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Teresa Phillips. I am a stakeholder in the third ward. I've raised children in the third ward. I'm raising grandchildren in the third ward. The third ward is my home. And I thank you for hitting the pause button because it needed to be hit. It was, everything was moving too fast. And we, as stakeholders and neighbors, we were trying to educate ourselves on this issue. And with it moving as fast as it was, we didn't feel that we knew what was coming. So I say that to say, we were looking out for our children because we all know our children don't always do as we say them to do. They are watching us and hoping that we make the best decisions for them. And the fact that the third ward hasn't been touched by the city in 20 years, and now you want to bring this in to the third ward, what kind of message is that sending to our children? That money is everything? Money rules? Money talks? And some of these children will not be mayors? We know this. Some of these children will not make the million-dollar paychecks. But they will be your next-door neighbor, and they will influence your children and your grandchildren. And if we don't get it right with them, do you really want them to influence someone that you care about? Because all it takes is one to influence your child, and your child will become a statistic. Even though you live in East Grand Rapids or live on the moon, all it takes is one of ours that has been affected. all it takes is one of ours that has been affected to infect yours. And then what will we have? Chaos? So I thank you all for hitting that pause button so we can think about the future, the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
My name is David Davis. I was born and raised in Grand Rapids seventy-eight years ago. I've seen the major changes in our society today. And what we're looking at tonight is the people that want to sell these products. We haven't addressed the demand for their products. What is wrong with our society today that we don't set the examples to reduce the demand for marijuana? It's people that want to escape from reality that are demanding this product so that they can go off in la-la land or whatever. They do not have to escape from reality. You have to face reality to produce a reasonable life. I've met a number of people that not only, they use marijuana and the reason they use marijuana is because their parents used it. We set a bad example. Our society needs to change its example and slow down and stop the demand for these hallucinatory drugs that take them out of reality. So we have another reason to look at it besides not wanting to have it in our neighborhood. We have to do something about our society to stop them from escaping from this reality of real life. I've lived the real life all my life and I know what it's about. And we have to start following the reasons for living. And that, I've seen many of the people that came in here for wanting these marijuana licenses and I found out that many of them are from out of the area of Grand Rapids. Some from Detroit, some from other cities and even Chicago. Why are we listening to these people? We've got to start working on stopping the demand and then they won't have any need to come into this area because there won't be any demand for their product and there will be no profit in it. It's a profit motive for all of them. Now, there's medical reasons. I don't know why the medical profession hasn't developed a way to use those same elements in marijuana in a safe way without the hallucination effects of marijuana. I believe that people need to have their pain relief from the proper way, not just going out and getting some drugs. And that, and I'm against the use of hallucinogens. And I would like to let people look at the bottom source of the reason that we've got all of these people looking to come here and make a profit. That's my ideas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Good evening. Thank you for opportunity to stand here on tonight. My name is Pastor Ulysses Gaddis. I'm the pastor of Prince of Peace Missionary Baptist Church. We are in the same neighborhood as Madison Square Church. I'm standing here not just as a pastor in that neighborhood in which this particular organization is trying to plant, but I also stand as a person who grew up in that particular neighborhood. My mother still lives in that particular neighborhood. She lives on Oakdale Street, which is very close to this particular location. I also pastor in this neighborhood. I have watched over the last forty-some-odd years how this neighborhood has changed. The neighborhood used to be a place in which a number of our Dutch community lived. They moved out. And the neighborhood has experienced a lot of change. About a year and a half ago, I stood before Planning Commission and I asked them not to grant a spirits license to a local party store. It was the same party store that as a youth where I was underage and bought alcohol. When we allow such organizations to come into our neighborhoods, we know through statistics that crime raises, that there's a rise in crime. We also know that there is a rise in loitering and a number of other things. I live in the Second Ward, but I spend quite a bit of time in the Third Ward. And some of that time is spent being concerned about my mother and others who still live in that neighborhood. And so I think you, this morning you exercised great wisdom in pausing and doing more study. I would encourage you to continue to do that. I would encourage you to evaluate these decisions and how it will have a long-term effect on our city. But I would also encourage you to be more equitable in the locations in which you choose for these things. Again, I sympathize with those who feel they have a need for it, but we need to be more cautious in our city and where we plant these things. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Hampton and I'm a resident of the Third Ward. I support the moratorium that the commissioners have placed on marijuana in the city of Grand Rapids for the next six months so that you all can study further and bring new recommendations forward. The location, Madison Square area, I'm opposed to that. Areas with dispensaries fear that there will be increased marijuana use. I fear that as well. And the odor is very unpleasant. A lot of the communities from my research have complained about the odor. Some residents complain that the neighborhood will be significantly impacted by drug use. And now we're being asked to shoulder the burden and risk of having dispensaries in our neighborhood, on our neighborhood streets, in the Third Ward. I feel that these fears are well-rounded. Many individuals from different socio-economic status may utilize the dispensaries in many areas. Our areas specifically lack the political and economic power to discourage the placement of these stores in our community. Again, I would like to thank you for the moratorium on marijuana. Hopefully it will be permanent as opposed to temporary. And in conclusion, I heard some of the residents stating of the medical marijuana use, but research shows that science is still not clear on how this marijuana use is helping. I'm not here to debate or I don't know anything about that. But I do know that the placement of the dispensary, Madison Square, I oppose to that. I am very strongly in disagreement with that. So hopefully the moratorium will be permanent and we will not have a dispensary on Madison Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Brandon Dillon. Live at fourteen fifty-five Ball, resident of the Second Ward. Raised in the Third Ward. I, I wasn't planning to speak, but there's a couple of things I just wanted to distinguish, I think, in the public comments we've heard tonight is a debate over the moratorium that was enacted this morning and a debate over legalization. For folks that don't know, I was an advocate for legalization going back to two thousand and twelve as a time as a state rep. And one of the reasons I became an advocate for that is the data was clear from the states that had already legalized, particularly Colorado. And a lot of the fears that have been mentioned here, and I don't fault anybody for raising those concerns, have just been totally unfounded. There hasn't been a rise in crime. In fact, there's been a decrease in crime in Colorado. There has been no use, no increase in youth use of marijuana. In fact, it's gone down. There's been no increase in dropouts or poor school performance. In fact, those indicators have gone up the positive way and drunk drivings and fatalities from drunk drivings have gone down significantly. There are certainly issues to discuss around equity and the effects of marijuana retail shops in certain locations. And I think that debate is one that is worthy to have, whether that means keeping the separation distances between institutions of religious worship or daycare centers. But that seems to me different from putting a six-month moratorium on an issue that was clearly decided by the voters in two thousand and eighteen and frankly, wasn't even close. In the Third Ward, Prop One passed with sixty-five percent of the vote. In the Second Ward, it was almost seventy percent of the vote. I'm not sure of the First Ward, but I believe it was a little bit below that. The voters have been clear since the time they decided to decriminalize marijuana in Grand Rapids that their view of this is firmly on the side of making sure that we do not relegate a generation of people to continue to have criminal records because of the prohibition on marijuana and we actually provide opportunities. That's a real debate that the City Commission should be having, but it's my fear that a six-month moratorium doesn't accomplish that. What could accomplish some of the concerns is allowing this issue to go to a public hearing as was originally intended this morning and allow residents and advocates and people who are pro and against this issue to have a full opportunity to debate the merits of the specifics. But I would argue that this debate about legalization was closed in two thousand and eighteen. And the communities that are being smart about this are making sure that they have specific regulations but are not rejecting this altogether. And frankly, a six-month moratorium, the only thing that does is perpetuate an illegal market in Grand Rapids for marijuana for another six months. Nobody is going to be able, nobody is going to have a problem getting marijuana in this city, even if we don't legalize adult rec use. But if we do do the right thing and the smart thing and have a public hearing and weigh out those issues, we can make sure that that doesn't have to go on any longer than it has. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deandre Jones. First of all, I got to say I've never seen so many pastors at the City Commission. That's crazy. But first of all, I'd like to say, far as medical cannabis, that there, there isn't going to be any revenues from medical cannabis that actually goes to the city of Grand Rapids. All of the revenues that the city could actually make that can actually go into something is going to come from the recreational space. So my idea, what I always like to do is I like to give positive feedback. I'd never like to say anything negative. How come nobody's talking about police and community relations? How come nobody's talking about criminal justice reform? We stay in this, I'm from, originally from Chicago, but we stay in a state where they invest more into private prisons than education. Now, people always talk about the city of Grand Rapids is looking at other cities and other states of what they're doing. But when is the city of Grand Rapids, the second-largest city in the state of Michigan, actually going to do something to push the needle forward, to do some type of reform like passing recreational consumption establishments? Instead of having coffee at cops at the Broad Street Market, you have these Coffee with the Cops and Designated Consumption establishments because a lot of black people and people of color have been locked up? Like, why aren't we talking about and thinking this, looking at this in a different space where we can actually have community conversations in spaces where most predominantly male Caucasian officers are locking up people of color? Even they're locking up Caucasian people. They lock up the sellers, they lock up black people and colored people of color because they're good at selling. They lock up Caucasian people because they're good at growing. This is very true. But I just wanted to say that just because nobody's looking at this from a light of recreational can be used for affordable, eco-friendly affordable housing, after-school programs, let out of housing. Equity for potential funds that can go into helping minority people actually create businesses. Like no, there's going to be no medical that's actually going to be able to help the city of Grand Rapids that'll all go to the county and other municipalities. So when people think about this cannabis thing, we need to look at what can recreation do? How could we use those funds to actually pour into the city to make the city better and do other things like, like build better roads, better schools? Pour that into the city. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Deandre.
Hi. My name is Jacob Vine and born and raised in the Grand Rapids area. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself and Flourish LLC. So Flourish could not be prouder to have established its headquarters in Grand Rapids within the four-nine-five-oh-seven district. For the past eighteen months, we've been investing, renovating and expanding our location on Phillips and Hall Street. This location is not just the home of our newly opened provisioning center, but also our corporate headquarters and most importantly, our state-of-the-art cultivation facility. We plan to invest over thirty million dollars into this facility by the end of two thousand and twenty. Our ability to invest in our Grand Rapids cultivation facility, which is by far the largest portion of our Grand Rapids business with the most job opportunities, will be restricted if adult use is delayed. I also anticipate that we'll have to redirect portions of our investment allocated to our cultivation facility to our other facility in Adrian, Michigan. We expect that our Grand Rapids cultivation facility would employ over a hundred people in unplanned and accepting resumes shortly. At this point, our headcount number will be far less than unplanned if we're restricted to medical-only licenses. We remain committed to our pledge to focus on hiring Grand Rapids residents, particularly from the neighboring communities as well as veterans. These are good jobs. Jobs that provide wages well above minimum wage with health insurance and other benefits. There are jobs that, these are jobs that provide employees with many opportunities through promotion and training in a new and expanding industry. We are intentional, we were intentional in our location in a NOF district. We are surrounded by talented and hard-working citizens in the four-nine-five-oh-seven district. Not only are we able to hire such great employees, but we have a great opportunity to support growth in an area that has been disadvantaged by certain economic and environmental policies. In a few weeks, we hope to launch our social equity platform with a focus on three pillars. Investment in infrastructure, jobs and workforce development, criminal justice reform and advocacy, and community service. To address these, we hope to partner with other, with the city and other organizations. As an example, we'll be supporting the up-and-coming four-twenty expungement event by the Black and Brown Cannabis Guild. And we'll be donating our time as well as financial contributions. As a business in the marijuana industry, these commitments are not just good for our company, our employee morale and our community. We believe that we have an obligation to contribute to the reversal of the negative effects of the war on drugs. To that end, we strongly agree with the Commission's efforts to further social equity.
Thanks, thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Denavia Moje. Live a few blocks from here. I also have the pleasure of working with Jake at Flourish, the only open dispensary in the city of Grand Rapids. And some of you joined us for our grand opening on February seventh and had the pleasure of walking through that beautiful facility right off Hall Street in the four-nine-five-oh-seven. When I'm not at Flourish, being the corporate impact strategist, I also have the pleasure of being the leader of the Black and Brown Cannabis Guild. And I came before you all in September to have National Expungement Week declared and to facilitate a large statewide expungement clinic that blew the state away. We had over four hundred people come through Link looking for those services and at the same time sharing their passion for seeing the industry, the legalization and also seeing equity. So not just as an employee in the cannabis industry, not just as an advocate for equity in the city, but as someone who's been hand-in-hand with the city as this all has unfolded, I have to be really transparent about my frustration having been so vocal with the city about the need for social equity for so long. With city staff, I was telling a lot of people this morning that I have emails from city staff dating four or five months back where they're saying, let's meet about social equity so it can be introduced in the recreational ordinance. And to arrive here this morning and the presentation not include anything at all. Now we have so many things on the line and at the end of the day, it didn't have to be that way. The city of Grand Rapids knew we needed social equity. We didn't just realize diversity was a problem today. The Planning Commission understood when we talked about medical that we wanted social equity and recreational. And so... And so, yes, and I'm also the mother of the little boy with the tablet. This is my assistant. But yeah, I'm just super frustrated because we know that equity is important and the city staff dragged their feet on it. And now we have an entire industry of people. Excuse me. That's not okay. We have an entire industry of people who are questioning whether or not Grand Rapids is the market for them because we're stalling on their ability to make a profit. And that's, that's, that's not what we wanted. We wanted to be able to have the industry here in Grand Rapids. Residents voted for it. And we want the tax revenue from it. And now we've jeopardized so much by a six-month delay. And I think what I'm asking the commission to do today is not only to continue to prioritize social equity, but to not pose it as black and white, like we have to have social equity or wait six months. Like, there's no that we, no way that we can introduce something sooner. And I think that would be the best of both worlds, that we honor the importance of that timeline for 420, but that we also find ways to be intentional about revising what the planning commission has done to honor the work that they've put in. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Hello, everybody. I'm, my name is Clary Sanderson. I am from Colorado. I have seen the increase in crime in Colorado because of the marijuana. People are moving to Colorado because it is legal there. I do not want it in my neighborhood. I live on Hall and Jefferson. I see enough crime there without marijuana in that area. I have no family here, but I don't want to see the crime increase because it's been, dispensary is right across the street from me where everybody can just come and go and say, "Please." So I'm just asking you not to, please. I have grandkids that come visit me from Colorado, from Texas, but I don't want them to know that I live in an area like that. I don't really tell them it's a bad area because I don't know it. I'm not, I'm not from here. So the things that I have seen in that area, just, just the years that I have been, three years that I have been on Jefferson, I have seen so much. And I don't want to see anymore. But the crime in Colorado has increased because of the legalization of the marijuana. And people think, and that's the place it needs to be, everybody wants to move there so they can get it medically, recreational, however they want to get it. But I don't think it should be in this area. There's just too many people that it can harm. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to close that public comment and we'll move on now to approval of our minutes from our meeting on February 11th.
Hello.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It carries. Now, that takes us to our petitions and communications, which there are many.
We're going fast here, folks.
Yeah, there are many.
Number one, communication from Linda Hoving regarding their resignation from the Housing Appeals Board.
That's referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Tammy Vanderburg regarding their proposed ordinance amendments for marijuana.
That is received and filed.
Communication from Caitlin Boone regarding their resignation from the Urban Forestry Committee.
That's referred to the Committee on Appointments.
Communication from Jose Rodriguez regarding their resignation from the Grand Rapids Civilian Appeals Board.
That's referred to Committee on Appointments.
Communication from Mary Ryan regarding their resignation from the Grand Rapids Police Civilian Appeals Board.
That's referred to the Committee on Appointments.
Communication from Richard Bukowski regarding their resignation from the Grand Rapids Police Civilian Appeals Board.
Referred to the Committee on Appointments.
Communication received from Corinne Carey regarding the Pelisades Nuclear Power Plant located in South Haven, Michigan.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Don Lee, the Grand Rapids Democracy Initiative Ward Registering Committee regarding the recommendations of the Task Force on Elected Representation.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from community religious leaders expressing support for marijuana ordinance 5.9.19 to remain in effect.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Ryan Strahan, President of ACP Entertainment, expressing concerns regarding the current licensing ordinance relating to amusement rides.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Bruce Bowman, Oakdale Neighbors U.D., regarding dispensary locations.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Ronald Gorman, Interim Superintendent for Grand Rapids Public Schools, expressing support for the application of the State of Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund for Ottawa Hills Park.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Stephanie Adams, Executive Director of Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, expressing support for the application of the State of Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund for Ottawa Hills Park.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Stephanie Adams, Executive Director of Friends of Grand Rapids Parks, expressing support for the application of the State of Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund for Camelot Park.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from Lori Weir, Church of the Servant, Church Administrator, expressing support for the application to the State of Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund for Camelot Park.
That is received and filed. Nice work. Nice work. Now we have our reports of city officers.
First one, Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Report for October through December 2019.
That is received and filed.
Comptroller's Report for the period of January 30, 2020, through February 11, 2020, in the amount of $19,252,795.70.
That is received and filed.
Comptroller's Major Funds Midyear Monthly Reporting as of December 31, 2019.
That is received and filed.
And Treasurer's Report for the period of January 25, 2019, through February 7, 2020.
That is also received and filed. Thank you, Joel. Next, that takes us to our consent agenda. We have one item, D1, that will be removed from consent. Do I have to have a motion to remove it from consent or it's already off? It's already off, okay. So outside of D1, we now move to our consent agenda that we discussed this morning. Do I have a motion to approve? All right, any discussion about the consent agenda this morning? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. That takes us to D1, which is removed from consent, which is, the way I have it written here, is a City Commission Resolution to delay by six months the acceptance of recreational marijuana applications and a six-month moratorium on the medical marijuana ordinance. So that was your motion, Commissioner Lanier, so I'll turn it to you to give us the background on the discussion this morning.
Yeah, I, I actually think because we have the ordinances to be adopted prior to this agenda item, we should cover those.
The other way the agenda is written.
Mr. President first and then go back to that item that's off consent.
I have items removed from consent before that, but.
Oh.
They moved it to a resolution.
Okay.
Because it was different than what was on the.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
So Commissioner O'Connor, let's talk about the ordinance amending Section 1 of the Budget Ordinance 2019-19 for fiscal year 2020, Amendment Number 12.
Yeah, there's a few items on here. Our Public Services Department is working to appropriate some fund balance for the purchase of the site, the former Kent County Road Commission site. Item 2 is for the Uptown Corridor Improvement Authority, expending some funds. Number 3 is the Police Department has received a grant for Homeland Security for our bomb squad for some new equipment to serve regionally for all our neighboring departments. There's some, just some transfers of funds around for major and local street funding alignment. We're going to do an assessment of our refuse fund operational assessment, and we received a developer deposit for the vacation of Mount Vernon Avenue. No use of contention.
Great, thank you. It's been, a motion's been made and supported. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappert?
Yes. And can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
Above.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It carries. Next is a consideration of an ordinance for a major amendment to a planned redevelopment district at 2289 East Beltline Avenue Northeast.
Left.
Support.
All right, Commissioner Jones, I believe.
Oh.
Or Commissioner Isasi.
I'm prepared.
Okay, you are, all right.
The planned redevelopment district, the PRD, was approved by the City Commission in late 2001, proceeding number 6933, and was subsequently divided into five parcels. The two lots fronting the east belt line, including the subject property, have been developed to date, with construction currently occurring on a third property at the west end of Peregrine Drive. Several amendments have been approved over the years to facilitate, facilitate adjustments to building location, parking lot layout, and vehicular connection to the Celebration Village to the south.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about this item? All right, this is also a roll call vote.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Isasi?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Lanier?
Yes.
Commissioner Rappert?
Yes. All right, now it takes us to the thing, the item off consent, which I'll read again. "As the City Commission Resolution to delay by six months the acceptance of recreational marijuana applications and a six-month moratorium on the medical marijuana ordinance."
Mr. Chairman, we first need to suspend the rules, and then, once we suspend them, then we can talk about the motion.
Joel told me I didn't need to suspend the rules.
I don't, I don't know how that got on there because, because we discussed it this morning.
Okay.
So it was a first reading, so.
Yeah.
I missed that when I was looking at the scripting.
No problem.
All right, so do you want to give us a little bit of background, Commissioner Lanier?
Absolutely. First, I'd like to thank the 26 people who provided public comment on this topic this evening. And I know it's challenging to try and come and express yourselves in, you know, with last-minute notice with so many changes. And, and there have been a number of people over the course of the last year talking about all of the changes and, and trying to understand our marijuana, marijuana ordinance. And so I'll begin by what I believe is helping to frame why I felt it was important this morning to, to request the moratorium on both medical and recreational. And I think that the, the conversation starts with the fact that the Planning Commission made recommendations to change the medical marijuana ordinance, when they were requesting the changes to the waivers that already exist. And so, in, in light of those, those, that request or the changes that they were proposing, it made me reflect on our existing ordinance more attentively. And as I started reflecting there, then I was led back to a communication that occurred back in the fall from the West Michigan Cannabis Guild that shared all of the concerns that they have with the current ordinance and asking the city commission to make modifications. Then I was led to another communication from a concerned citizen who had been, who's working in the cannabis industry with communities of color. And she too sent a lot of detailed concerns and unintended consequences that exist in our current medical marijuana ordinance, as well as what she believed would occur in the recreational, as we were considering regulations for recreation, recreational marijuana. Then I was considering a couple of weeks ago where we received a communication from the faith community where they were sharing concerns about our current ordinance that we have with medical and recreational, and, and proposed recreational. I have been in conversation with a number, a number of business owners who have expressed their limited resources as it relates to understanding this industry and how do they internally put measures in place for their employees? And, and they, like someone may have mentioned this evening, has shared that they did, they do not feel as though the city has equipped them as businesses with this new budding, pun intended, industry. And then there have been a number of neighbors who have expressed in that this occurred this evening as well, not fully understanding this industry and how rapidly it's moving and that they can't even keep up with the number of community meetings, public hearings from Planning Commission, City Commission discussions, and just how convoluted it has become. Some of the concerns that the West Michigan Cannabis Guild outlined that I thought, like mentioned a little bit earlier today, is tied to the length of the Planning Commission meetings, as an example. So, you know, they're having seven-hour and eight-hour meetings trying to get through the, the applications that are occurring. And one of the things that they requested as a guild was figure out a way to streamline that. So it's just a plethora of concerns that have come from a multifaceted, a multifaceted area of our community that I don't think we can ignore. And as we are taking into consideration the inequities and the unintended consequences of what I would feel was a very rushed ordinance in the first place. And, and when you do policy, and when you rush policy, you never get the best result. I have been an elected official since 2007, and I believe personally this is the worst policy that I've been a part of in the history of me serving as a public official. And I think that this train is going down the wrong path. And I think we owe it to the community and all the people who have provided feed, unsolicited feedback, by the way, to pause for a moment in order to do the work to make sure that not only medical, but also recreational are, are both done in a way that yields us the results that we were looking for, which includes equitable outcomes for people who live within the city. Additionally, that we would have more local presence. I do recognize that there, for example, the state of Illinois, they recently passed a law for, they combined their medical and recreational. I think we should do some research to see what it is that they've done. We've had other communities in the state of Michigan who have set moratoriums because they're concerned about some of the outcomes. I can recall going to a MML conference, which is a conference for local elected officials. And in a class that was led by a cannabis expert out of Colorado, one of the pieces of advice that he provided for us was to go slow. And we didn't go slow, but we're learning now that we should have. And I think that it's important for us to, and I, and I would hope that after the feedback we've gotten this evening, that after all of the dialogue that we've had, that we do recognize, like, nobody on this dais agrees that we have a good ordinance. And because we can all agree upon that, I would hope that all of my colleagues would join in the ordinance, in, in the moratorium that we adopted this morning. And I also believe for those who have come sharing their concerns about their own businesses, I share those concerns with you. And in no way, shape, or form am I advocating for those who are trying to open a business in our community to not be able to do so. But what I, what I want to caution you on is we're just not doing this right. And please join us in making sure that we do this well going forward. So look not only at your own business, but look at some of the other impacts that we were trying to make that we weren't able to accomplish. And so I'd ask you all to join me. I will make some clarification points for the ordinance so that there's no confusion at the recommendation of the city attorney, which, which indicated that it was a bit vague. And so I want to make sure that those points are covered in, in a little bit more depth. So the motion, well, and I think, let me just make a last point. The policing issue is another factor for me because we don't necessarily, the state of Michigan doesn't, we do not as a city have regulations about policing those who may be engaging in legal consumption of cannabis. And so we know, some of us may know personally, how, who becomes on the, on the losing end of a battle when we don't have clear policing policies. And so, once again, we need to do right, set the, set the right framework for this so that then we can have the outcomes that we're hoping to have. So, back to the ordinance. So I'd like the ordinance to read as follows. "The City Commission Resolution to delay by six months the acceptance of recreational marijuana applications and a six-month moratorium on the medical marijuana ordinance approvals beyond the current 24 approved medical licenses." And this is effective from, this six-month starts with the April 20th, 2020 date that was already in place that we were discussing earlier.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
Support.
All right, I'll open it up for discussion now on the motion on the floor. Yeah, Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah. I find it, you know, the motion on the floor this morning was around a resolution to establish a public hearing, to hear the, the feedback on the land use provisions established by the planning commission, which were presented to us unanimously. There's been an argument that we, it's, it's hard for people to get to these meetings, to show up, to, to, to make their voice heard. But the protocol that's in place for a public hearing is that we provide reasonable notice to people in our community. to people in our community so that they can take the time to come, make their voices heard to the decision makers at this table. And yet we're making a decision about this land use based upon a group of people who's come to this meeting without notice, who has, have come tonight to make their issue, their opinions known, and they came to the previous meeting without a public hearing and made it known. And we're going to delay and deprive others in our community the right to petition their government as well. And so I find it a bit disingenuous, I find it quite disingenuous as a matter of fact, that we're not allowing at least a public hearing to happen to understand the consequences, both for and against recreational cannabis in our community. And so the idea that we're just going to put a moratorium in place without actually giving an opportunity for people to come here and address us with notice is reprehensible.
Thank you. Anyone else want to chime in on this discussion?
Yep, thank you very much, Commissioner. I want to state that on this morning, I too joined Commissioner Lanier in support of bringing forth a delay or moratorium on recreational as well as medical, in particular licensing opportunities for medical. And there was a request that that occur for no more than six months. I still stand by that desire to see that occur for some of the very reasons that she mentioned earlier. She gave a overview of her position. I do very much respect what my colleague, Commissioner O'Connor, has presented in terms of what he finds to be somewhat offensive in terms of the lack of public speak, speech by those who are either for or against recreational, do not have an opportunity. I would, I want to suggest that I think this particular effort is not giving the opportunity, it is simply delaying the opportunity. I think that it goes without saying that the motion or the desire to put a moratorium in place is not signifying that we are trying to defy the law. And again, the people have spoken in terms of the statewide vote for legalization of marijuana. It is simply an opportunity to take a good, hard look at something that perhaps some of us deem as flawed. I will not take the time on this evening to give a lesson on the absolute, on the damage that has been done, in particular to the African American and Latino communities historically with regards to marijuana. I won't go there. I'll leave that alone. I'll leave that for a future meeting because it's real. And it's something that, like most other things in history that are uncomfortable, folks don't want to talk about, they don't want to consider. Perhaps the mindset is, let's just move on from that. Well, it's kind of hard to move on if the recommendation is to just kind of keep things going as is. And I vehemently oppose that because we have to be, I think, right now, we have to be vigilant in wanting to create some opportunities. If we say we're about social equity, we need to show that we're about social equity, not later, but now. And the reality is, is I too receive phone calls and communications from folks who are concerned about this. And, you know, again, I won't take the time to compare and contrast in terms of the pain that perhaps someone is feeling right now because of the potential of having this postponed for six months compared to the pain that has been experienced by a people group for centuries. I'll leave that alone. I'll wait for another meeting to talk about that. The one thing I am willing to do, because again, I recognize it is, I would recognize this as being, you can call it a compromise, I would call it, I would call it solid legislation. And that is, I am not in favor, after having time to think about it, I'm not in favor of having the individual, or the organizations, or the licenses that are currently, the applicants that are waiting to be considered who are in the queue. I am not in favor of having them be impacted by the moratorium. I would like to have them removed from that and allow them to continue with the process with the Planning Department and with the Planning Commission. But I am in favor of a moratorium on both recreational and medical. I think that is a very fair compromise. It is not clearly what everyone wants, but I think it gets us to a better place because it gets us an opportunity to work on the things that we said that we're serious about and in no way injures individuals who have, for lack of a better term, played by the rules and they followed the instruction that we've given them. And so that would be the place that I would hope that we could get to as a commission on this evening is get to a fair compromise.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Moody.
Yeah, thank you. I too voted this morning, along with my colleagues, in favor of a six months moratorium. But over the last few hours, I've had the opportunity to sit down and do my due diligence in studying the decisions that have been made and the processes of us voting on that decision. There are three things I want to say. Number one, I am not in favor of a moratorium to penalize those who are already in the queue. I think that it's important that we've already got individuals who are prepared and ready to go. We should not hold them back. Over the past two years, we have had the opportunity to sit down and talk about medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. And I'm glad everybody has come out to voice their opinion and to talk about what's important. That is key. The other thing is that I don't want the city to find itself in a situation where it's being penalized because we made it a decision that affects the entire city and affects business and communities. And we ourselves, some of us haven't done our due diligence as well. I am not in favor of the zoning decision to change waivers. I will definitely vote against putting any medical marijuana facility near a church, school, or park. I need that to be understood. But at the same time, I want to be careful how we proceed as a commission in this order that will affect our city. Because I do not want our city to come under scrutiny where our city finds itself engaged in a number of lawsuits. And that is something that we don't want. The other thing I want to make very clear is that there were a number of groups in the city that I've had the opportunity to sit down with, African American groups, to sit down with and talk about applying for medical and recreational, and none of them pulled the trigger. So we cannot sit here and say that there's, there has not been an equitable, fair chance for any group not to apply. Because there have been groups, a number of groups in this city, who have sat down and over a period of a year negotiated and talked, but nobody applied. So I don't want us as a commission to be penalized, or the city to be penalized because there are individuals who did not do their own due diligence in applying for medical or even recreational. The other thing too is that I do know that there are some African American individuals who are trying to get engaged in transportation. I don't want them to be penalized either because they have an opportunity to change. Because what we saw the day, I think we saw, what, only four, 20% engaged throughout the state of Michigan in terms of secure transportation? That's a very low number. So the opportunity is still there for individuals to apply for those license. That's where I'm at right now. I mean, there's a lot of things that we've got to consider, and I'm concerned as to the direction that we're going to go in as a city commission.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Yassasi?
Thank you for the comments to my colleagues and for people who came out and who have been discussing this issue well before this evening or even in the last few hours. First, I'd like to say I know many people who utilize recreational marijuana, who utilize medical marijuana. And for me, I do agree that the voters have spoken, and it is our job now in the city to figure out how to make this operational. What I do think is disingenuous is to spend four hours today in a planning session and use words like equity more than 15 times, to use words like intentionality more than five times, to use words around wealth building more than, I think, five times. I wrote that down because as I was going through this planning session, that we all took time out today, we are not talking about, we are talking about tactical things when we really need to be talking about structural things. This is not the oppression Olympics, and I do not, there is, it is very hard to say this person's position is worse, or I am suffering. The reality is, we have said we are equitable city. We have said that we want to make structural changes in this city. And if we do not start to do that today, then I fear we are wasting the time in a planning session for four hours, and then another one, and then another one, to keep on co-opting words like equity and not really being about it in our community. I am personally committed in the six months to being part of that process, to taking people's unsolicited feedback to say, I want to be part of this. I want to understand how other communities are doing, that I want Grand Rapids to be known as a place that not only talks about equity, but that has figured out how to operationalize it, that has recognized that many things in the past in our country have been legal.
That's right.
Many things have been legal. And today, we have this opportunity to say, just because something is legal, doesn't mean it's just. I do not take this decision lightly. I have, as I said, have researched this issue. I have spent time in Colorado. I myself went to the Flourish grand opening. I want to make sure that after my first four years on the commission, that we are setting up things to be structurally, structural change in the city and not to simply do the blocking and tackling of everyday work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll turn it back to Commissioner Lanier, and then we'll call for a vote.
Yes, unlike Brandon, it's probably somebody else's quote, but my grandmother used to say, if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything. And this is, this feels like that to me, if I'm being honest in this place, with those of you who supported this moratorium this morning, who are now saying, you're not sure. I need you all to stand for something. Stand for something. There are 13 applications. How many of them will accomplish the equitable goal? See, this is part of the concern. We don't know enough as we're making statements, you know, at this table over really serious issues. You've got to stand for something. So we have 20, 24 approved licenses. Nobody's going to suffer for six, if we pause for six months and do this right. If we go through the process with the 13 applications, we're going to saturate this city and not accomplish the goal. Stand for something. So the public, there was a public hearing at the Planning Commission. So voices have been heard. And what happened as a result of that, the Planning Commission submitted recommendations to us that was contrary to the public's opinion. Stand for something. We're here not because this is easy work. We're here because it's challenging. And we have to have principled decisions that we are standing on when we, when we get to the most challenging of issues. This isn't the time where something is dangled or the right words are mentioned and then we start waffling. This is the time for us to stand for something. Risks are high. I don't take that lightly. I'm probably the most conservative with the lawsuits and all of that on this dais. But in December, we didn't care about risk when we passed a gun ordinance that was contrary to the state's law. We didn't care about it then. Now we're concerned about risk? Stand for something. I, all I can say is, if we're not accomplishing the goals that many of you said were a priority for you, let's get this right. If we do this right and we do this well, maybe it won't take six months. But we got to stand for something. So I need you two to continue down the path that we were on this morning, and I need you two to hear what we've been saying. These people have come out and they've been here all night with us. They've been emailing and carrying on. Stand for something. We can't use words and keep using buzzwords and think it's cute when it's convenient. This is one of those moments where we have to vote what we keep saying and stand for something.
May I have a comment?
We're going to go back over here, even though I said we were going to vote, but we need to vote, and then, and then we can move forward.
I'd like what my colleague said in terms of standing for something. I believe that personally, I am standing for something. I'm standing for something that we have adopted since I was appointed on this commission. We have some rules in place that we followed, and we gave the City Planning Commission some direction. Because of what was voted in reference to their changing waivers, they got to come back to us and we have the deciding power. They don't necessarily get the say so in the end. We do. And if I'm wrong, correct me. But I think along the way, we still have the power to direct and change the direction of where we're going with medical marijuana and recreational without even having a moratorium. We have the power and authority to do so. Now, this is where I'm at. I'm at the fact that we have already started something, and if we change it again now, we may find ourselves down the road after six months during another six months moratorium because we're not yet ready and we're not yet moving in the progress in which we thought we were. Once again, I'm in favor of a moratorium. I'll put it this way, but I think at this point in time, after my reading and understanding, I'd think that six months might be too long.
Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Connor, and then I'm going to call for a vote.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. To my colleague, Commissioner Lanier, I am fervently 100% behind the idea of a moratorium. No doubt, I have no doubt, I have no hesitation in supporting that. Did not have a hesitation in supporting it on this morning. But I do give a lot of, I put a lot of credit, or I put a lot of emphasis on the power of discernment. And what I've had is the opportunity to give thought throughout the course of this afternoon, the decision that we made this morning. I don't, I don't, I have no hesitation in moving forward with supporting a moratorium while also allowing the 13 who have followed the rules to continue with the process. I can appreciate your position that, or your belief that they could very much saturate the market. I don't think there's any guarantee that the 13 will be approved. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. What I do know is that what we have before us is that opportunity to get to the ultimate goal, which is to change and to proactively work towards a more equitable outcome for recreational marijuana, a more equitable outcome in terms of ownership, in terms of economic opportunities for recreational. The fact that medical is a part of it, I think, is also a benefit because we will then have an opportunity to take a good, hard look at that, at the steps that we've taken thus far and perhaps some of the missteps that we've taken. However, I do not think it is good business to take the 13 who have, again, followed every step that they've been required to take and to penalize them for that. I just, I don't, I don't agree with that. And so I think that we're going to have to agree to disagree, but I need to make it perfectly clear that I am in, I am totally behind a moratorium on both recreational and medical. I am 100% behind that. I can't say it enough. I can't say it enough, but I'm not in support of holding back the 13. I'm not.
So Commissioner, you use language like penalize.
We're, we're gonna go to Commissioner O'Connor next.
Okay.
And then we're gonna vote.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on the floor that's very significant.
I understand that.
And we've had a number of people who've weighed in. I don't want to rush through the dialogue so we can just vote. So, I hear you, but we, if, if somebody has something to say, we need to say it.
The task and the chore of the Planning Commission was to provide us with a land use document. And that is what was on the table this morning, a land use document, not a social equity document, not a local ownership document. That is not the task of the Planning Commission. That is our task. If we feel that there needs to be an avenue upon which to create pathways for local ownership, for minority ownership, for social equity within the cannabis space, that is our task. That is not the task of the Planning Commission. I think they provided us a well-thought-out, well-articulated, unanimously supported by people who we all decided that we would like to serve on that commission document. And so, the idea that we have, we want, we want to go down the path of figuring out ways to create local ownership and local equity opportunities, we can do that. In fact, we missed an opportunity when we created the mildly, you know, mildly if hardly nonexistent impactful MyVita document that, we talked about this a year and a half ago when we talked about medical marijuana. We swung and missed, guys, just like I said we would. And so now we have a licensing document that's on the docket to be adopted on April 20th. That is our, that is our tool, that is our mechanism, that is the way in which we as a commission create pathways for local ownership and local opportunities in a licensing document, not a land use document. Land use can certainly have impacts on things, but land use is not what is going to create local pathways to ownership. By limiting the scope of land use so that we only have 14 available sites in our city, that's gonna impact the local people having the capital and financial resources to be able to access the market. So, land use is gonna have some impact on it, but land use is not going to create a pathway to local ownership. So again, I'm just reiterating, let us have a public hearing around the land use of this and we can still take the time. We have the time after the public hearing to decide if we'd like to put a moratorium in place. I don't understand the urgency to put a moratorium in place today without hearing all of the debate and discussion. We still have the, we are the, we have the, guys, we can also change it if it doesn't work. We have that authority. We always act like we do something and we can never amend it, like we can make amendments to things. So, let's, let's just put a resolution on the floor to, to, to allow a public hearing to happen. And then we can come back and, and continue to think about pathways, continue to hear from constituents, continue to hear from people within the industry, continue to figure out ways in which we can get local people to have an opportunity to participate and, and benefit economically from cannabis. Okay. Thank you all. We had, we had a good discussion this morning at length. We had more tonight, so I am gonna call.
Point of order. So, point of order gives me the floor just in case you're not sure what that means. And I'm not saying that offensively. I just know that you're new at sharing, that's all. I have another comment that I want to make and I have the floor and able to do so. The first comment that I'll make is, Commissioner O'Connor, you're absolutely right. We can change at any point. That's why I have the moratorium on the floor. So, we can change and get this thing right. We know what's wrong, let's get it right. And I think it's disingenuous to try and have a public hearing about what came from the Planning Commission that we all were saying, where does this, this even come from? They had a public hearing already. And the content and the feedback that they received from their public hearing, they didn't send to us. And so, there is already a concern. And Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Moody, to the 13 people who have applied, you, I don't believe, want to be in a predicament where once those are approved, then where it lessens the number, there was only one applicant out of the 13 according to this morning's feedback that was local. So, what do we have to lose? And we already have four or five local owners in the, already approved 24. So, why not pause on, they're not even from our community. So, we, but our community came out tonight. And our community, over the last few months, have been giving us feedback all along, telling us what's wrong. So, can we listen to the community and say, let's get this right? Let's take, they've already provided enough feedback. And we can do some engagement and we can fix some of the, the angst that exists within neighborhoods about how to go about lobbying and making changes for this. We don't have to go through the process of those, at any point, somebody's gonna be in any queue. We need to stay firm on this moratorium so we can do this right. Who knows what the outcome will be from the changes?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Lanier, can I ask one question?
Please.
Because Commissioner Lanier is very passionate about this and, and I understand. Would you be willing or would you think about separating the two, the 13 from the six-months moratorium?
Here's what I'll say to you, is this. There are 13 applicants. Only one of them we heard this morning was local. We, let us pass this moratorium tonight. Let staff go and assess everything that's currently on the books so we can come back and make a more educated decision about some of the low-hanging fruit items that could probably be passed quicker, sooner than later. But let us not, not pass this moratorium tonight. That's to the detriment of this community. I wholeheartedly believe that.
Okay. So, we have a resolution on the floor, a motion that's been seconded. So, I'm gonna call the question now. All those in favor of the resolution on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I would propose a resolution to set a public hearing for consideration of zoning text amendments relative to marijuana, adding recreational marijuana land uses and modifying some requirements for medical marijuana land uses, modifying the administration, timing, and mapping of the required separation distances, establishing a process for the review of approved medical facilities seeking to convert to or introduce recreational component and other amendments meant to clarify and correct previously adopted language. This is the language from the original motion this morning.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor that's been supported, the original motion this morning to set a public hearing for the 17th. I open it up now for discussion on that motion. Yeah, Commissioner Jones?
I am not in support of a public hearing. I think that, or I'm not in support of a public hearing right now. I think that we, that would be rather premature based on the fact that we, I think, really, again, need to consider the moratorium that was brought before us on this morning, again, without the penalization of the 13. And so I'm not in support of a, of a public hearing.
Okay. Anybody else wants to weigh in on that motion? Okay, we'll call the question. All in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, nay.
Okay, motion fails. Because there's only six of us tonight. That's why this works with seven people. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with a moratorium that we set for both medical marijuana and recreational marijuana and that the 13 applicants who are currently in the queue not be impacted by that moratorium, but they be allowed to move forward with the Planning Department.
Support.
Okay. New motion on the floor, which is a moratorium on rec and medical, six, for six, up to six months, like you said this morning. But that does not include the, the applicants that are currently in the queue.
Point of order?
Yeah. It's a 14 applicants or 13 applicants? Does it not matter, or does we just say? I would say afterward, we make, whatever's in when we make the decision. So, I think that'd be.
Just for clarification, I think we received applications today. Is that, yeah, so? So, just date certain would probably be better.
It'd be, it'd be after our decision. Yeah.
We appreciate that clarification. Clarify what you just said, City Manager.
I think the, the number we provided this morning, 13, was prior to applications received today and my staff reported to me that we did receive one application, so.
So, it's 14?
So, there's 14. This is secure transport. Okay. Discussion on the motion on the floor. Commissioner Sassi.
Commissioner Jones, could you clarify, Commissioner Lanier, when she put her motion on the table, she talked specifically about the timeline. And I think just from what we heard from the city attorney, just some of the, I feel like, I need to know the dates and things like that. Are you saying six months from April 20th?
Yes.
Up to six months.
Up to six months.
Just a brief comment. If you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
It carries.
I need to see the ayes. Fails.
Okay, it fails, okay. All right, motion fails.
Those are your three options.
Those are our three options. Was, or that we, I guess, suppose we could, I could entertain a motion to table it, but at this point, we don't need to do that or just go to our next meeting. There's nothing on the table. Okay.
Or I can re-put my motion on the floor. Which I, matter of fact, I am. I'm re- replacing my motion on the floor for the City Commission Resolution to delay by six months the acceptance of recreational marijuana applications and a six-month moratorium of the medical marijuana ordinance approvals beyond the current 24 approved medical licenses from the April 20th, 2020 date. For the record, you can put a motion back on the floor if that's what you're asking.
Okay, so, motion's back on the floor. Do we have a second for that motion?
Support.
Okay.
Support.
Any further discussion? Yeah. Yeah, I just, I also'd like, just like to remind all of us that we have a, the 14th amendment protects against unreasonable taking. And I do believe that if, if this motion were to pass, we would certainly be sued on constitutional grounds that we are unreasonably taking rights from the, those 14 applicants who are in process.
Right.
Okay. We're gonna call the question again on the motion on the floor from Commissioner Lanier. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
It fails. Okay, that takes us to our public hearings and we're gonna consider both of these at the same time since they're both related to our Parks Department. So, I see Dave and Mark Hoard coming up to share us, share with us about these.
Good evening, Commissioners. Well, this has been a night of passion. I am here with a couple of items that are a regular part of the cadence of city government. Two grant applications that we are submitting to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources due on April 1st for two third ward parks, the first of which is Ottawa Hills Park, a restroom facility that we'll be constructing to support the new amenities we have built into that park. The second of which is a restroom facility for Camelot Park, where we are building a new splash pad at this location.
Wonderful. Thank you. So, anybody who wishes to be heard on these two grant applications, now's your chance. Mr. Miller, you have something to say about these?
I was born Catholic, so that was the seminary. I don't know how many seminarians they could put in there, 200, 400, the old St. Joe's Seminary. Now, last time I pointed out that the best use of it, almost meeting after meeting, number one agenda is affordable housing. Be a perfect spot for 200, 400 SROs in there at the former seminary. The Ford Eastern still runs, runs there as well as the 24 Burton Bus Route. I haven't been there far back, but you could grab a hold of a HUD loan, a 40-year HUD loan, get a hold of that property and use it for affordable housing. When that crowd is around, you know, you pretend you're affordable. It's a perfect spot for affordable housing. Thank you ever so much. What's the other report?
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anybody else wish to be heard about these two grant applications? All right, I'll close that public hearing and now it's our time to, we're public, the public can make comment on anything they wish.
Accustomed as I am to public hearing, and a couple of things grabbed my attention here. None of these planning commissioners were, have been appointed legally, okay? You go back to your agenda in November and December, and none of them were named to, in the agenda, in the Tuesday evening agendas to get on a planning, this has been going on for years. Also, following up in the Saturday paper, their names weren't in the Saturday paper. So, sitting there as a planning commissioner illegally. One year, I caught the secret 36 scandal. 36 people probably meeting, secret meetings. Another year was the secret 66 scandal. So, this is all illegal. Also, I also point out once in a while, we lost Wyoming and Walker and Paris Township Kentwood. They did not join Grand Rapids because of these secretive nighttime meetings. When I tried to bring that out with the Neighborhood Summit, one year, five police officers, they called me, five police officers showed up for exercising my right, which I paid for, this microphone, and to, I contested that, that whole process of secret 36, secret 66 scandal. So, that's certainly a matter for a federal lawsuit. This is a federal matter. We have the national, international, international treaties requiring other countries to ban marijuana. They should be observed. And anyone, there's stuff going on in Oakland Duster, near me. You've got marijuana being planted there as far as I can figure it out. And if it drifts across the Ford Freeway, okay, which is also federal, then my neighbors have a legitimate beef. A lot of people tell me marijuana really stinks, okay? Cue, I heard that word, cue. One of our leading lights up here promised me and my senior neighbors that we would get fresh air. That these, these federally subsidized senior housing units with 20 or more units, senior citizens put up by the feds, we would finally get fresh air. That's our cue. It is a, I think it's the Fourth Amendment, our right to be, you're taking away our possession of fresh, of fresh air, okay? Now, one other thing I'd like to be bringing up. We hear last night, 2600 people dead of one virus. Today on Fox, it's 2,700. Here's a watchdog exclusive. Every day of the year, some 200,000 people around the world die. So, it's, so far, it's inconsequential. And New York is obsessing over it. There's no reason, I think it's too and happy in, is excessive. And the other things should be funded instead. I also found out today that.
Thanks, Mr. Miller.
So, get on that, wait, 36 and 66 illegally appointed.
All right. Name is Rodney Perry. Lot of discussion about marijuana than that. Due diligence is required in a lot of areas, other areas as well. I've had to deal with your art of evasiveness for over three years in dealing with property taxes. I've been made a lot of empty promises by those who I don't want to mention by name, but we've had meetings and they've amounted to empty promises. Let me update on everybody on the status of my situation. City inflated my property taxes, charged me three and four times the correct amount. They used the wrong classification, the wrong square footage to calculate it. They admitted on paper and yet, and even I have a court order that you refuse to follow. The city refuses to follow a court order signed by a judge and you want to talk to me about honesty and integrity and all those other things. I'm not sure where it is, but I haven't found it. But, Sinida, I, well, Ms. Lanier, I definitely appreciate your willingness to stand up for what you believe because some of the other folks are ducking and dodging behind the law. Now, Ms. Hitchcock, I know you're, you're a lawyer and all that. Laws don't change because they're not legal. They change because they're not right. So, it's not good to hide behind them. Now, in the next two minutes, I'm gonna tell you a little story. This is Black History Month, so indulge me just for a couple of minutes. My parents came here from Mississippi where that N-word, City Manager, asked me not to use. They used it like rain coming down from the clouds. They moved here, they wanted to buy a house, they had a good job, they had good credit. Homeowner wouldn't sell them the house. A lady who happened to be white bought the house, sold it to my parents. Two years later, they wanted to buy a property in Cedar Springs. They had the money, they had the jobs. They had the money, they had the jobs, wouldn't sell them the property. The same lady bought the property, sold it to my parents. The road commission, partner of transportation comes in and says, well, we need part of that land. They gave other people $2,000, $3,000 for a quarter acre, half acre. They gave my parents $600 bucks for two and a half acres of land. My parents never cashed the check. So my point to you is this, while you publicly and sternly, and rightly so, told me not to use that N-word, they treated my parents by their actions and by their offer. And that's the same thing that's happened to me here. You ducked and dodged and ran around and gave me all kinds of excuses as to why you can't interpret the laws. You know the laws just as well as you can read, you know the law. Everybody in here knows what petitioner is an owner means. I'm the petitioner, that means I'm the owner. But you have some of the brightest minds in the city of Grand Rapids and the state of Michigan, and suddenly nobody can figure out what that means? That's nonsense. You know it, and I know it. Now, I can't even talk to my third ward commissioners, because I've been told I got to get a lawyer. What if I can't afford a lawyer? Now I'm just stuck. Now, my property is gone as of March 4th next week. I don't think that's right. I'm waiting for you to have a good heart to do the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
My name is Sergio Cider Reyes. I'm here today with people from different advocacy organizations and some residents to express our concerns after learning about an incident in which a detective from the Grand Rapids Police Department engaged in jury tampering. We understand that this individual engaged in a text conversation with a juror in which he gave the juror instructions resulting in a mistrial. We are also concerned about the police department's request to start using drones for surveillance. We understand that they want to increase response rates to crime scenes to improve the solving of cases, but we are uncomfortable with them being granted this technology until there is a clear policy with teeth to prevent them from using this technology for other purposes. There's a serious problem with community police relations. Trust has been eroded over generations. Recently, the Michigan Department of Civil Rights held hearings on resident complaints, complaints which were not presented through the Internal Affairs Complaint Process. This lack of trust, followed by much work by advocacy organizations such as Linkup, Venable ACP, Movimiento cosecha, have led the city to create the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability. This office may serve as the entity to create policy that makes residents feel at ease with drones and which could prevent, or at least hold officers accountable when incidents like the jury tampering take place. With much resident participation, it could serve as a resource to improve community police relations, but it must be funded in perpetuity, independent of temporary budgets. I ask Commissioners to support the strengthening of this office for the interests of community and so that we can continue improving community police relations. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jocelyn Monahan. I'm a volunteer with the ACLU of West Michigan, and I'm a member for that reason of one of the community groups that Mr. Reyes was speaking about recently just before me. And the reason I'm here tonight is to express the ACLU of West Michigan's continued interest in supporting police accountability and reform within the city of Grand Rapids. And for that reason, we support the Office of Oversight and Public Accountability because it specifically is in a position to do just that, and in particular, in terms of front-end accountability, right? Because it can engage community members and get that input from community members about what the community feels those kinds of changes need, what kind of changes need to happen. And that office is uniquely able to do that front end and then the back end accountability that I was talking about earlier. As a final point, the ACLU would also like to flag restorative justice as one of the components of the police accountability and reform efforts that Grand Rapids is undertaking. We talk about restorative justice, we talk about righting a wrong, all right? And the wrong we're talking about when we're talking about these kinds of reforms are wrongs that have been, wrongs that have been done to people in our community by law enforcement, wrongs that have been done to people of color. There are certain ways that prosecutors' office, law enforcement can restore that relationship by doing something right, and the ACLU supports that as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is David Hast, and I'm a first ward resident, and I'm part of a grassroots group called Grand Rapids Climate Action. There are a few of us here tonight. We aim to help Grand Rapids be a model city in the fight against climate change. We've met with some of you and won't be meeting with others. In February last year, Mayor Bliss gave an inspiring speech to the Michigan Climate Action Summit. She said that climate, the climate crisis is urgent, that in the absence of national leadership, cities and states have to step up, and that we have to set very bold goals. She expressed, and I quote, "Our desire to be the greenest mid-sized city in the country." End quote. However, the reality is that Grand Rapids is doing too little too slowly. Many other cities, like Ann Arbor, are already moving much more boldly than we are. If you're assessing our greenness as a mid-sized city, we're far from number one. The city's goals for greater equity for all residents, for affordable housing, for better transportation, all of these are connected to climate mitigation and adaptation. But you will have to take risks, political and financial. A rapid, unprecedented plan of attack is needed from government and other stakeholders. Right now, the city intends to build one-fifth of the originally proposed Butterworth solar installation, with a possible plan to develop the rest of it soon after. But even with a big solar array on Butterworth, the city would only achieve its 2025 goal for 100% renewable energy by buying a large quantity of renewable energy credits on the marketplace instead of building more of our own energy. Where is the will and the plan to be more energy resilient and independent? And what about transportation, such a hardship to so many in our city? Unless you and other regional partners find a way to massively scale up the rapid, how will there ever be economic, labor, and housing justice? Will you perpetuate the system where buses in Grand Rapids are a minor, often inadequate alternative to cars instead of the dominant form of transportation that they need to be? The Grand Valley Metro Council just released the draft of its 25-year transportation plan. This plan pretends that nothing has changed in the world. It foresees a city and a region built around cars far into the future. Will the city of Grand Rapids just rubber stamp this plan, or will you push back? Will the city join with other cities in Michigan to demand energy and climate action from the state? Will you demand that the monopoly utility companies get out of the way of the energy freedom the public wants and needs? Will the city of Grand Rapids come up with a strong climate crisis plan this year instead of your current goal of 2023? We have to wait three more years just for a plan?
Thank you, David. You can leave that with us. Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bob Senk. I live in the third ward. My comment today is about the urgent need to take action on climate change. Scientists tell us we need to make significant progress in cutting our carbon pollution in the next 10 years. That is, if we are to avoid a great deal of human suffering for many more years. Most of us here will not live long enough to see the worst of that suffering, but I hope that does not mean that we don't care about it. I hope that we care about the future citizens of Grand Rapids as well as the current citizens. And I hope that we especially care about the poor citizens, because they will experience the greatest suffering due to climate change. So action is needed now, and action today is already overdue. I applaud the commission on the work you have done so far on the Butterworth landfill site for a solar farm. I hope this will be just the first of many projects and many initiatives. I applaud the commission for changing the ordinance regarding residential solar. I hope this will be the first of many ordinance changes that help people invest in efficiency and clean energy. I myself have invested in solar water heating and solar PV panels. I volunteer some of my time with Grand Rapids Climate Action and the Michigan Solar Users' Network. But not everyone has been given the advantages that I have been given. Others depend on your leadership. We need your commitment and your creativity to devise systems that empower the poor and everyone in Grand Rapids to participate in and benefit from a clean energy revolution. Thank you, Commissioners, for listening, and thank you for caring about the poor and about all of our citizens, those with us today and those coming tomorrow, our future grandchildren.
Thank you so much.
Hello, name's DeAndre Jones. I never got to say it, but I seen the city manager at one of the recent Golden Gloves meeting at St. Mary's Church. I actually do a lot of recording for WKTV, so I'm a cameraman, so I record like basketball, football, all type of events. And so I was wondering, why doesn't the city of Grand Rapids get behind the Golden Gloves and like helping like promoting it? It keeps people off the streets. I know people personally that's been in like shootouts, that's seen their friends die, people that's been in like fights at the mall, people that's been fighting in the streets. We talk about like cleaning up violence and actually stopping. Why don't we get behind something that actually means something other than street cred? Because you can't cash in street cred after you beat somebody up. You just get popular. Like, it's not cool. Like, it's honestly not cool. I just want to know, like, what does it take for the city of Grand Rapids to get behind things that are actually constructive, that's keeping people off the streets that I know like firsthand that's been causing ruckus in the city? It's very constructive. I've seen, I recorded the Golden Gloves last year, and it was amazing. Like, it was a great experience. I believe some of the Commissioners actually went through, you'd be like, oh damn, this is actually constructive. Excuse my language, I didn't mean to say that, but then I want to talk about police accountability. So I go to a lot of meetings with coffee with the cops, and I know every police officer isn't a bad officer, and I commend those police officers that go out there and defend their lives and put everything out there on the streets. But we also need some reform behind that, just because a lot of people don't have the heart to go sit with these police officers, because they think that police officers are going to find out like what was their first like credit card purchase or something like that. People need to know that these police officers aren't trying to like investigate them or anything, but they just want to see that they're people just like, I'm a person, police officers have a life beyond the badge too. And I'm just speaking as a young African-American male that's out there in the community that's talking to these police officers and not trying to single or snitch anybody out or anything like that. I just want to talk about policing, community relations, and how do I build that trust? Like, how do I get black people to actually trust the police and not have those systematic barriers or those racial barriers that we happen to go through, or just people of color when they see a police officer, they get scared? Like, I would like to see that, because I don't get scared when I see the police, but I believe that's the community work and just me being a fearless human being and just not having really any fear. But I'd just like to see just more reform behind that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, DeAndre.
Russell Olmstead, West Side, Grand Rapids. I wanted to come back up and speak again on behalf of the same thing that Sergio brought up around police accountability, oversight and accountability. The office that is still being finalized, I've had the pleasure of sitting through Brendan's presentation, I believe, four times now, and it's extremely informative as far as the importance of what this office is going to be doing and necessity towards oversight and accountability in the community. With the issues that we've had around policing and the lack of, the deterioration of trust between the community and the police, this type of office and being funded properly and being independent can help to rebuild those roads that may have, that may have been in disrepair as far as trust goes over the years. But I also believe that it's a key component to go along with having good policing, is having this separate, independent office that can monitor and help maintain an independent look at an oversight around policing and the issues around policing. We're coming up on the area of budget right now, and this is one of the key times to actually discuss this importance of the OPA and the need to fund it properly in order to maintain its independence, to be able to have the proper staffing in that office, to be able to achieve all the goals and the potential of what that office can do. So I encourage you to, while you're going into the budget process, to look at funding it outside of the police, out of the, I think it's Police Community Relations Fund that it's funded on right now, because I believe we're two years into that, or three years into that five-year plan right now, that that money will run out, and this is going to be an extremely important office that we don't want to be funding down the road. I also would encourage you to look at funding it in a way that other cities around, communities around the United States have funded their accountability offices by looking at about 2% to 3% of your public safety budget being allotted towards going towards accountability, so that it will always maintain the right ratio. As public safety is funded, so is accountability at the same time. To be able to come up with that sort of funding package might work well. So I appreciate your time, and also thank you for the rigorous debate up here. So often, things get passed without that, and from the public perspective, it's nice to be able to see the decisions and how hard they are and how seriously you all take these decisions. So thank you.
Thanks, Russell.
My name is Eileen Ick, and I've come here tonight to share with you some stories about me. This past November, my stalker and rapist, whom I have a restraining order against, was led into the house by my roommate upon request to speak with me. At 7:00 AM on a Monday, he banged on my bedroom door loudly pronouncing that he had never done anything to me. I stayed on the phone with a GRPD operator for over 30 minutes, crying while I waited for the police to arrive. When the police arrived, my stalker was outside the house. An officer came in to speak with me and insisted that the man who raped me, stalked me, and caused me great fear seemed harmless. My stalker told the police that he wanted his backpack, which he claimed was in my car. I knew it was not, gave the officer who spoke with me my car key, and confirmed that it was not. In 2018, a then 12-year-old Grand Rapids citizen was handcuffed and placed in a cop car by officers who were in her backyard on business completely unrelated to her. Will she one day become a woman like me, who may need the police to help her but cannot trust them to uphold the law? The police should take complaints seriously and be held more accountable. I also have additional statements, because I was not aware the moratorium was being discussed on marijuana today, and did not have a statement prepared for prior to voting. I would like the commission to consider that medical research has shown that medical marijuana can alleviate the symptoms of several diseases of dementia like Parkinson's, and that postponement of access robs victims of these diseases a certain quality of life and potentially months of their life. I would also like the commission to consider that I volunteer with the Boys and Girls Club of Grand Rapids, and in my work with young people, I try to grow their self-esteem, their emotional intelligence, and their resilience, so that they might, so that they might never abuse any substance, be that marijuana, illegal drugs, or the alcohol which Grand Rapids is so proud to produce. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, and everybody else that's here this evening. My name is Kyle Lim, and I have the pleasure of serving on the Public Safety Committee as an appointee of the first ward. I'm here to, again, show my support for the Office of Public Accountability and particularly its creation and sustained presence in our community. As a member of the Public Safety Committee, I've had frequent conversations with the Commissioners that serve on there, and the need to give a committee of that nature more teeth, to be able to ask questions and have some mechanism to be able to enforce accountability for police and fire to respond to those questions around accountability, data, transparency, that my fellow citizens that are a part of that commission often ask for. And nothing has come of that from the Public Safety Committee perspective. That's something that we're in continued conversations around, and I look forward to that work. to that work. In the meantime, I think it's overwhelmingly apparent, as somebody who sits on that team, that we need an infrastructure, a sustained infrastructure for police accountability. And I think that there, having heard what has been presented from Brandon and his team, that we have such a thing in place. I echo Russell's concerns around ongoing financial stability of such an office, and I ask that the Commission, as they enter into this budgeting process, strongly consider some of the recommendations that have already been made tonight in an effort to sustain an ongoing structure of police accountability for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi again. My name's Leslie. Again, I am the neuroscientist at the Van Andel Institute. I wanted to make one last comment about how this vote for the moratorium, or whatever you call it, is supposed to be against, the vote you made this morning was supposed to be about a zoning ordinance, and the moratorium came out of it, and there wasn't any notice to the community whatsoever. I have hundreds of cannabis colleagues that would have appreciated a notification, understanding what was going on. They would have gladly shown up with a proper notice to give their input, and the decision about the moratorium seemed abrupt. And I would also like to remind you that we're not talking about just cannabis and THC here. We're talking about CBD products as well. And I imagine that many of you have either tried THC or CBD yourselves, and it has been very beneficial for you and your grandparents and all your church-going colleagues. So I just want to remind you that we're not just talking about THC here, but making CBD quality-controlled and accessible and not just gas station-approved CBD products. We want this to be safe and of the quality that you would want for grandma, right? One last thing, I'm happy to see that there are like two or three people here outreach for climate change and action on that, and I'm totally in support of that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Howe, Second Ward. I came down tonight to talk about the mid-year performance management report that took place this afternoon. During the meeting, you had an update from Ryan Kilpatrick about the work of the housing next is contracted to do around affordable housing. I have two questions for you guys that maybe you could ask or look into about the data they're collecting. The first question is, how is this data going to be made available to the public after it's been collected? I know sometimes we throw things in dashboards or maps, so just what type of end-user access will the public have to the data they collect? And the second question is, will this data be a frozen snapshot of one time and place in our city, or is this going to be a living, breathing data source that we can continue to update for years to come? Because often, we go out and we commission a data set, and then it's, after a couple of years, it's no longer the same, and we just keep relying on that old data. So hopefully, what they're building there will be great. The other thing, one of the items I wanted to bring to your attention, is that the zoning changes are coming from the Planning Commission for the Amplify GR project in the next few meetings for you guys to approve. And I want to recommend that, as we're still early in this development process, that the city, especially the city urges Amplify to pursue a VITA. I know it's one of our policies we passed with Housing Now, and we're really excited about it, and we said this is going to be comparable to LEED certification, and people are going to want this. And so far, nobody's wanted this, and it's not being held up as this big item. And I'm hoping that with the commitment that Amplify is making to the Boston Square Neighborhood, and if the city is urging them, strongly urging them to complete a VITA, we could take that commitment and move forward into a written document, which we all work forward together on achieving. So if you have the time and the will to see our first VITA, I think Amplify is the first development company in our city that really would care enough to even pursue that. Last is two things on the medical marijuana discussion. I'm a little confused with Commissioner Lanier's ordinance. It was to pause it and, while we look at the zoning tax amendments, and then Commissioner O'Connor said, "We won't do that through the zoning tax, we would only do that through licensing." And then he voted that ordinance down, but then put an ordinance up for a public hearing about the zoning tax amendments. So I'm just confused why we would put that up. And the other thing is, I've never seen the Roberts Rules of Orders thrown down like I did tonight, and that was impressive. No offense, Commissioner O'Connor.
Commissioners, thank you. I'm back one more time. Commissioner Lanier, you go, girl. I have had a very good education of how things work tonight, and I'm quiet, but I also know character when I see and hear it. And I've seen a lot of character be thrown around here tonight. I've had thoughts and ideas before of people. Some, I'm not surprised. No, I'm not surprised. The Office of Public Oversight and Accountability, I really hope that you do put money into this. We do need it. Officers that abuse their power, I really hope they are going and gone. Jury tampering, the young man brought that up earlier. Yeah, that's not right, but hey, it happens here. And back to getting these medical marijuana things in here, I can see where you want the drones in here, because they would be needed. And I can see at least 10 of them in our area right now. And I have to say, I don't know where the heck somebody gets $30,000 when I can't even get something from the bank, they're going to overcharge me just to get a loan. How is somebody getting $30,000 worth of drugs to set up a dispensary? And yeah, I said it, and you're scared about somebody suing you? You're scared about white people suing you. I'm not afraid to sue you. I will sue you in a heartbeat. And I know how to put the papers in myself and push it forward. I've done it before. So stop counting African-Americans out. Because I'm old and I'm tired, it's past my bedtime, and I have to listen to a bunch of stuff. That's just not right. So I can sue too, and thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will close that public comment, period, and now it's time for comments by Commissioners. I'll start down here with Commissioner Isasi.
I want to thank all the staff. Many of you have been here for now 14 hours and maybe even a little bit before then, so thank you. I want to say that there was democracy in this space tonight. I thank my colleagues for the robust discussion. When I took this position, I knew, when I wanted to run for this position, I knew that there, everything wouldn't be happy, it wouldn't be just the ribbon-cutting, so it wouldn't just be people wanting to take selfies with you, that this is the work that matters and I'm committed to it. I stand by what I talked about as it related to equity. I watched a show this weekend. It's called Henthified. It's on Netflix. I don't only read the meeting packets, I watch TV. And why that's important is because it's a show that talks about the very things that we were discussing today. Issues of climate change, displacement in our city, community police relations, who wins and who doesn't in our community. And I can't help but go back to this six-part Netflix story and to say that we are in the middle of this growth and prosperity in Grand Rapids. And as I said, I'm committed to doing this work. Thank you all for coming out. I would happily stay here to continue to listen to individuals because I know that coming out and speaking only for three minutes, you are completely committed to this community. Whether you agree with things that I might vote for or not, I'm always available and happy to continue this discussion outside of this meeting today. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanier? Commissioner Moody?
I want to thank the community for coming out and giving yourselves the opportunity to not just hear us, but us hear you. There are a lot of things that are going on in our city. We got good, and we got some things that we are working on. Overall, we have a long way to go, and so far, at this point in time, I think the City Commission has done a great job from my onset of being here, and yet still, there's work that needs to be done. So once again, thank you all for coming out.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner O'Connor? Joel? Anita?
Just remember, we have an election two weeks from today, so the presidential primary. So if you need an absentee ballot, or if you need a registered vote yet, you need to come to the clerk's office and do that, but you can still do that between now and Election Day, and if you need absentee ballot, I got them.
Okay. Thank you, Joel. City Manager?
Commissioners, I want to thank you for your engagement today. I know it's been a long day for you as well, and thank the staff for all the work that they've been prepared for, both tonight as well as the workshop. I also want to thank Deandre for calling me out like that. Who knew? But also, I want to also express my appreciation for the difficult public policy work that you all did this evening. It's not easy. I hope our work as staff will never be easy, but hopefully, what we do helps you to navigate through those difficult issues.
Thank you, City Manager. Thanks, everybody, for coming. I'll wave to Mayor Bliss because she's probably watching it online. I know that she wishes that she could have been here for such an important discussion, and the good news is that we get to continue it. So at our very next meeting, I'm sure we'll continue this discussion, and we'll keep ratcheting it down and making refinements so that we come up with the best policy possible. So thank you all for coming out to make comments. Thank you to my colleagues for your commitment to this work. Thank you to the staff who presented so much wonderful information to us this afternoon. And we're adjourned.